All right, back on the Chris Beckham Show on this Tuesday afternoon. Rainy Tuesday afternoon. Two four one one oh five nine is our number. Brought to you by the good folks at Valdosta Toyota. Also my very good friends at Old Copeland's Garage, 1000 North Ashley Street, right here in Valdosta. And again, we will have some sports coming up later on this hour. Thanks to our good folks at the White Tiger March Larks Institute. But after speaking for an hour on the school consolidation, and again, I really appreciate Jimmy Watley and Mike Hill for stopping by and taking part in this discussion. And as I told them, and I certainly mean it, anyone who has the interest and the passion to get involved with this, no matter what side of the issue that you're on, I do appreciate that very much, and I do appreciate their time. Some other fellows who have some interest and passionate about this are in studio with us right now, from the Lowndes County Board of Education, Philip Poole and Fred Wetherington. Gentlemen, good to see you again. Thanks for coming by.
Thanks, Chris. Appreciate you having us back.
Also, from the Lowndes County School Office, School Board Office, Dr. Troy Davis is with us as well. Dr. Davis, how are you?
Hey, Chris, I'm great, thank you.
Appreciate y'all coming by. And again, a lot of stuff we're going to cover this hour. We'll be taking phone calls in just a little while, but we want to hear from these folks before we do, and maybe it's something they say will spark an interest. Let me ask you guys right off, and whoever wants to take this can, one of the things that Jimmy and Mike, Jimmy really brought up, talking about the cost of the consolidation effort, and you know, there seems to be some debate as to whether the cost of the figures that are represented on those Lowndes County School Board website are the actual figures. Now, you heard, I assume you guys were listening to the previous interview, and when you hear someone talk about, you know, there's no guarantee that's what that millage rate's going to be, or there's some discrepancy in that, you know, how do you respond to that?
Chris, I'm gonna start out, let me just say this. First of all, both those gentlemen are fine gentlemen and upstanding, and Mr. Jimmy is a friend of mine, and I, you know, so we're just gonna have to agree to disagree, and I've said this before, you know, I encourage everybody to do your own homework on this, you know, but I'm gonna read a couple of facts. He read some law to you and stuff like that, and I'm gonna read some facts to you here. The Chattanooga Hamilton County School District, which they had on their website for months and months as the sort of example, and that's where their hired consultant, you know, one of the places he had been to try to help, you know, make that happen, the consolidation happen up there. In their, in two years after they had done the consolidation, their property tax had gone up 30%. In Jackson Madison County, Tennessee, it had gone up 38% in two years. In Knox County, Tennessee, within five years, it had gone up 57%. So all I ask people is to look up the facts. Their school districts has done this. Consolidation is not the trend anymore. It happened in the eighties and early nineties, for the most part, and if you look back at what happened to property tax increases and millage rates going up, you know, it's a fact, it's a reality. Now, there's some systems that did bond issues, or back in the early nineties, there was the state, the state of Georgia had some incentives out there to try to build schools, they would probably, you know, put a lot of state money in that. That program is no longer there. We're out here on our own on this, you know, and there was no transition period put in this ballot question, so, and I will get back to the state law we quoted, that's the difference on this ballot question and several ballot questions where you did have a period of time that you could feel like the funding would not be an issue. He's absolutely right. The teachers will not lose their job on November 9th.
Right.
There'll be employees in the new system that will lose their job come the next July 1. I mean, you know, that's when the new fiscal year would start. So, you know, there's technicalities here, but I just want to say that Dr. Troy Davis worked very hard the last two months, because we challenged him to help us, once we started doing this research over the summer, to get to dig down into the numbers. And I think we probably should give him an opportunity to tell you, like, the consolidated tax millage rate, that's something that would come from the Tax Commissioner's Office. I mean, that's not a, you can't add the two and divide by two. I mean, you don't add the sum and divide by two. That's not how you do that.
And Troy, let me ask you, when we say, well, we look at these other places where taxes have gone up, why, what's the reason that they would go up so much?
Well, Chris, a couple of reasons. One is that in Georgia, of course, the state funding is by QBE, and so the formula, 1985 formula funded by QBE, and then the federal funding. And so that formula is very complex, we're not gonna go into that, but, because, but the primary reasons were all the loss of revenue from the state and federal government level because of the change of going from two systems to one, and mandated other actions that come about with consolidating the school system, such as, one of the things that's been mentioned on the other side is diversity. Well, with diversity, there will be some requirements to be met in terms of diversity. I just want to talk, if I can, Chris, real quick, how we came about this millage rate. For one, on the QE, on the QE website, on the Unification Movement website, they're asking for a same per pupil expenditures. And to do that, we would have to spend $16,834,000 more per year. And with the consolidated tax digest, and we got that from the Tax Commissioner's Office. It is, it is the real deal. It's the, what would happen if we consolidated, it would take more than the maximum 21 meals just to meet this one expenditure. The actual millage rate, if we kept the same numbers right now, if we said, okay, we're gonna have 25 million and change for the Valdosta City System, 20 million and change from our system, $45 million, we would have to have a millage rate of 16.317 meals. But that will not fund item number one on the unification wishlist, or this is what we want per pupil expenditures, their data, I'm looking at it, it'd take, that's only 13 more million dollars.
Now, let me ask you real quick, Troy, I don't mean to interrupt, but why is there a difference between the cost per pupil in the city and the county? I was just, I saw that difference, but...
Well, and there's several factors. One of them is that Valdosta City Schools will use more, they obtain more federal funding than we do.
Gotcha.
Because poverty rating, most federal funding in education is based on poverty rating.
Gotcha.
The second reason is that we have had a pretty good growth for our system, and coming with that growth increased FTEs, even in the seven years I've been here, we've seen a substantial growth. So, we were having to spend more money.
So, we're talking about the loss of funding from, and that's been one of the things that I know you guys have said, that we have to make up that loss of federal funding, I guess, or QBE funding, and, you know, they said, well, it's on a per pupil ratio, so you wouldn't lose that funding.
Yeah, well, here's what would happen, and I want to make this as simple as possible. With QB currently, come January 2012, for next year, next fiscal year, the state legislature is gonna fund these two systems separately, because at that point, I don't believe everything will be ready for them to fund it as one consolidated system, should the vote pass. Well, they will do that, but the state of Georgia is gonna come back, and in a midterm adjustment in January 2013, they're gonna say, wait a minute, Lowndes County, Valdosta, you once had two systems, now you have one system, and so, FTE-wise, if we had 400 FTE for kindergarten students, then we'd still have 400 FTE for kindergarten students. But all the categories that are not funded driven by instructional grade levels are in ranges.
I see.
They're funded by how many total FTE you have in the system. So, for example, central administration right now, 10,000 FTE for Lowndes County School System, I'm rounding this stuff up, but we earn a superintendent, a secretary, one assistant superintendent, whatever it is, well, that range may be from 10,000 to 17,500. So, we may, we may lose all the Valdosta City Central Office FTE, or some of it, because of those ranges.
Naturally.
Nurses, equalization, local five-mill share, all of those are driven by total FTE ranges.
And even if they're not all from the Valdosta City School System, but they would be from the, from the then big school system across the board, I guess, so, yeah, I mean, so...
Exactly.
Let me ask about, again, the education part of it, because I know, as I said to them, the financial's obviously big for everybody. Every taxpayer in Lowndes County and the city of Valdosta should pay attention to that. But for the, just the education standpoint of it, we say that, you know, is consolidation going to make education better for schoolchildren in Valdosta City and Lowndes County? Jimmy gave the example of, well, if you make the classrooms more balanced, then that will bring up those who are, you know, not performing as well, because they'll be in there and being inspired by those who are performing better now. And I've got to ask from a, you know, is there studies that bank that up, or, I mean, is that, do we think that's a proven fact, or just a hunch, or what's your opinion?
Well, the trend, there again, the trend is now, Chris, is to try to keep your schools as community-based and neighborhood-based as you can. Now, Jimmy pointed out, and, you know, I said, I think we just need to stick to the facts and truth, that we do have some county schools that's close to the city limit. So, we're not saying that on these federally approved lines, that there won't, some of them will be more convenient than others, but let's be honest, most of our county schools are out in the county, you know, and so, there's gonna be more transportation cost, you know, to achieve diversity, and that's, that's what, you know, that's what they've promoted, and that's, I think, that's what the DOJ would require, and that's what happened. Now, is it better for the education? If you look at the, I mean, I looked at, we've looked at research in California, Colorado, Arizona, West Virginia, New York, there's all kind of stuff out there. There's some, the most interesting stuff on your point, I found, was in Southern California, in some of the gang areas, I mean, you know, you're talking the Los Angeles area, and even whether it's Hispanic, or Asian, or whatever, you know, they've, they've reached the point where they're not, you know, they're just, wherever the community is, that's where they want the school, and that's where they're having the most success. So, the trend is definitely away from, I think, Mr. Watley is talking about, years ago, that was, you know, that they thought that just by, you know, and you want a certain amount of diversity.
Oh, sure.
I want to say this, you know, in all the mailings and radio ads and everything, there's all kind of money being spent on the other side here, you know, it talks about Lowndes County, and I just want to put the facts out here, Lowndes County is 34% minority, okay?
Yeah.
Okay. But more importantly, and I talked about this last time, and I want to say it, this is not about skin color. This is about poverty. Poverty is the number one enemy of public education, and our poverty rate is like 46, 47% in the county. That's higher, all these numbers are higher in the city. But I'm just saying, I would ask people to look at the facts and look where the issues are with the kids and in the schools, in the classroom. It's not about skin color, it's about poverty, it's about the home they come from, and that's not just a skin color issue. So, I'll say again, I hope we make it through this debate, and that we can keep this same energy and the same, I hope we can get some of those resources being spent on this side, and focus on where the real problem is, which is around, the issues around poverty.
We're gonna take a break, and I know, I promised you we'd get your calls in, we're gonna do that right after this, so, don't go anywhere, hang around. Fred Wetherington, Philip Poole, and Dr. Troy Davis from the Lowndes County Board Office are here in studio, and we're gonna ask that they stay with us for a little while, and I appreciate them being here today, and we'll be right back with more of the Chris Beckham Show, brought to you by Valdosta Toyota. More right after this, on News Talk 105.9, this is WVGA.
Now, back to the Chris Beckham Show, on News Talk 105.9, WVGA.
All right, back on the Chris Beckham Show on this Tuesday afternoon, two four one one oh five nine is our number. I did tell you a little bit of a fib while ago, as I said, we're having our Fox News at the bottom of the hour. This is more important than Fox News. If you want to know what's going on in Fox News, you can watch it on TV tonight. We'll be back with our regular Fox News tomorrow because of the issue of school consolidation, as we've talked about, with, in studio right now, Fred Wetherington and Philip Poole from the Lowndes County School Board, also Dr. Troy Davis from Lowndes County as well. And we're gonna take your calls in one moment, but Philip, I want to also ask you, there was something that came up you wanted to pay particular attention to.
Right, I just wanted to make a comment, Chris, about our current situation, and, you know, I know a lot of folks have stayed abreast of the developments in this consolidation discussion, but just in case someone has missed it, I want folks to know that after careful consideration, both the Valdosta City Board of Education and the Lowndes Board of Education have voted to oppose consolidation, and, you know, I know every member of both school boards, and I know each one of us wants to see improvement in student performance, but we just have not found any evidence that putting the two districts together would improve academic performance, or provide better opportunity for any of our students. And I want also folks to know, we've been talking about finances a lot, you know, the past few years, local school boards have really suffered from a reduction in state funding. We've got less tax revenue, we've had less surplus revenue, and in order to balance our budget, the Lowndes Board has had to do some difficult things. We've used a combination of retirements, job elimination, reduced pay for teachers and staff, we've increased our class sizes, and we've also heavily dug into our savings account to manage our way through the severe reduction in funds. And the last couple of years, we deliberately did not raise property taxes, because we knew it was tough economic times for the folks out in the county. Currently, both systems are able to manage with their budgets in balance, as long as we don't see continued state budget cuts, and we hope the worst of the state budget crisis is over. But right now, you've got two financially viable systems that are performing to their students, and we don't see any academic or economic benefit to trying to put those districts together, and we see a lot of downside.
Two four one one oh five nine, and I will again tell you that if you would like to get more information, there is a lot on the Lowndes County Board of Education website, so you can go there and take a look at some of the financial information breakdown. And let me also, just while I'm at it, say thank you to David Mullis, because whether you agree with this or disagree with it, he has done an extensive amount of research, and it's actually on our website, the link to his report is off valdostatoday.com, you can go to that, and it really, and he's against school consolidation, but he, just in plain English, points out point by point, kind of goes through it, and I think it's, again, no matter what side you're on, very much worth looking at and just see what he's got to say about it, so. All right, I promise phone calls, phone calls, we shall have, two four one one oh five nine, and of course, I can get it out on, so, that's line two, two four one one oh five nine is our number, if you got a call for any of the gentlemen here, or for me, we'd love to hear from you this afternoon. Hello, caller, how are you?
Chris, uh, last hour, I thought I was listening to Pelosi and the healthcare plan. Let's do it, and then find out if it works. Number one, these county guys, I can't ever get through to the QE group, so...
I'm not screening, I promise.
Maybe they can clear this up. My, I have a son that works in the system. My understanding is the county matches his savings by 6%. The city, I understand now, this is not factual, but I understand from one of the teachers, that the city matches 2%. If we consolidate, where is that other 4% gonna come from? And number two, I believe a simple solution from the QE mailout, the big postcard they sent out, give all the stats to city school system. Well, since the county teachers are so much smarter than the city, why don't we just swap teachers?
All right.
And that'll bring these kids up to the level we need. And thirdly, one I made to comment, about all these homes in the poverty area that don't have dads. I don't understand how consolidating is gonna make a dad come home and stay. So, if these guys want to comment, I...
Yeah, we will.
...I don't mind if they don't.
Hey, I appreciate you taking the call. First of all, the 4% part, everybody pointed to the money, man, Dr. Davis, that's you, so we'll let you address that part of it.
I'll be glad to, Chris. This will be the first year in our, but this is a budget balancing strategy that we had in, in the past, the schools, Lowndes County School System has put 6% into a retirement annuity for all of our employees. This year, for our certified employees, we are putting a up to match of 6%. So, that was a budgeting decision for us, as part of what Mr. Poole was alluding to earlier, we were trying to balance our budget. That saved us a substantial amount of money to balance our budget. I can't speak to why Valdosta City Schools budget. Marty and I, and Dr. Kason, or I consider them good friends personally and professionally, and we do talk, but that is part, that was part of their strategy for managing their money, and to attract the quality employees that they have as part of their benefit package, and that's kind of a company line, but that, I'm sure that's, that was, that's part of what we do. So, but that's the reason, the difference in the two retirement programs.
There you go. As far as the rest of it...
Well, you know, most of these decisions will be made, you know, either by a new board, or the current boards, you know what I'm saying?
Sure.
It all gets back to finances when you get back down to this, and I, you know, to me, I think we really need to keep it simple, you know. In the beginning, I've told, I think I said this last time, Chris, on your show, and I want to say it again, there, Philip alluded to it, there's a board members, school members on both sides, the city and the county, that several years ago, when this theory was thrown out here, you know, that we could save, maybe save taxpayers' dollars, we could improve student achievement, and help economic development, then they had our attention, you know what I'm saying?
Sure, absolutely.
But I'm just saying, after you dig down to it, and what I'm saying, look at the precedents, look at other school districts around the country, you know, Georgia, Tennessee, wherever you want to, it just don't bear out. Student achievement is not, is not, you know, is not gained, and the only savings comes in really small school districts. I want to say that. If you find some that's like 1,500 students or less, and you see those combined, and you'll see savings. So, you know, I want to, you know, I tell people, go out there and find it. And I know we've, you know, Mr. Watley, I think, talked about fear, and I'm assuming he wasn't talking about the Lowndes County School Board, because I think he knows us better than that, but on the jobs issue, I just want to say this, you know, I mentioned it a while ago, but even Dr. Jenkins, who at QE had come over and talked about the experience in Truap County.
Right.
I have a sister that's a certified teacher in Truap County, and married my brother-in-law Elaine, and I can tell you, what happened over there is, call over there and ask what happened to the employees in the West Point City School District. Almost every one of them lost their job. So, it's not a fear thing, it's just, we're gonna have to save, if you combine, you're gonna try to save money where you can, and when your funding is cut because of the QBE formula that was explained earlier by Troy, there will be job losses in support staff, teachers, administration, in all areas. So, you know, it won't happen November 9th. I want to say that again, because I think that's the technicality on all these flyers and things that's coming out. It'll happen that next fiscal year, you know, so, anyway.
Two four one one oh five nine. Hello, caller, how are you?
Good afternoon, how are you doing?
Great.
This is Marty Rush of Valdosta City Schools. I want to say hello to my colleagues across the town.
Hey, Marty.
Hey, Marty.
First of all, Troy, I don't think anybody has a greater appreciation for what you've had to do financially over the past few years, and nobody can understand that, I guess, better than I can, because we've had to do the same thing. Let me say that we've had to climb very high mountains, and when it comes to balancing our budgets because of the cuts from the state. I can't speak for the county, but I know that Valdosta City Schools experienced about $5.4 million worth of austerity cuts from the state this year. But if you talk to financial gurus, consultants, I know we've worked with one this year, he'll tell you that Valdosta Lowndes County is really an anomaly, because our tax base, our tax digest, has actually grown through these years of periods of great economic downturn. So, I think that speaks a lot for our community, I think it speaks a lot for our businesses, but I just wanted to call in and say, we appreciate what you do, we know how hard it's been, and for your board members, we know boards have had to make very, very tough decisions over the past few years, and I want to thank them for what they do.
Marty, thank you for calling in.
Thank you, sir. And so, for those who don't know, Marty's got Troy's job over in the city.
That's right.
I mean, so that's the, that's the two financial gurus right there, and Marty's a, Marty's a good one. The city's very fortunate to have him, and just like we feel, we fortunate to have Troy.
Absolutely. We're gonna try squeezing as many phone calls as we can, so we do appreciate you listening and your calls. Hello, caller, go ahead.
Hi, good afternoon. My, I guess mine's more of a statement rather than a question, I know y'all can't answer this, but my statement would be kind of what y'all were just talking about a minute ago, about teachers will lose their jobs. I remember, because I was actually involved in it a few years ago, when Mr. Griffin sold his corporation, he promised his employees, nobody will lose their jobs, we're gonna make this bigger and better for everybody. And in the first year or so, no jobs was lost, but now, you can drive out on that piece of property, if you can get it on there, get back into the back part of where his property used to be, his business, there's labs back there that are closed completely down, locked up, because the new corporation had to cut costs. My question to Mr. Griffin would be, is he going to do the same thing for the teachers when they lose their jobs? Is he gonna hire a bodyguard like he did because he didn't want his former employees hunting him down?
Well, let me just speak to that real quick, because we want to make sure, and again, no matter how you feel about it, Rusty Griffin, who is obviously leading the QE effort, he's not gonna have any say in it, nor will anybody on QE, nor will, you know, anybody really knows right now, because it's all gonna come down to a new Lowndes School Board. So, I understand the point you're getting at, but, you know, obviously, he's not gonna be able to fire anybody, or hire anybody, or anything else, so...
That's right. Yeah, he's not going to, but the Board of Education's gonna have to, but they're gonna have to cut costs, and I think, I think he's not being completely honest with the people when he's saying there's only gonna be one job loss, that's gonna be the superintendent. I'm not sure if it was your show or another one, a few days ago, I heard him make that statement, he said there's only gonna be one job loss, and that'll be one superintendent to be there.
Well, if he, let me just say, if that's what he said, that ain't true, sir. But hey, I appreciate the call, man. Thanks, thanks a lot, yeah, that's just, I mean, that's, that's...
And Chris, Rusty Griffin's a good man.
Exactly, yeah.
I mean, I, I know, I speak for Philip and Troy, and I know for our board and all that, you know, we need to keep personalities out of this, you know, I ask people, that's why I'm saying, don't listen to Fred Wetherington, go do your homework, you know, I mean, you know, study it and decide, and go vote, you know, whichever side you're on, go vote. I feel confident that if people look into it and see where the trends are, and what's happening, what happens under consolidation, that they'll, they'll get their question answered, and they'll, I think they'll agree with us. Philip, you know, said it a while ago, 15 of the 16 elected school board members in this county, county and city, you know, has decided this is not the way to go, you know what I'm saying? And so, either 15 of us are way off the mark, you know, or, you know, we've all tried to do and look at it, and I believe there's a lot of good folks on both sides that want to do what's best for the kids.
But I will say that it's, and again, this is not my opinion on it, it's simply the fact of, I rarely have seen a, an issue that's so hotly contested, but yet, it seems like, be so one-sided, because again, we take, and these gentlemen can attest to it, we're not that high-tech here, I don't screen calls, we take what it is, and we have certainly heard an overwhelming majority of folks who are against the proposal, both school boards, the Valdosta City Council, which never issues a proclamation about something that is directly, you know, involve them, they issued a proclamation about it. The NAACP, we had occupied Valdosta folks on here Thursday, and one of the first things they said was, we're against school consolidation. I thought, man alive, this, I mean, it just seems to be coming from all areas, and that's not to say that that should form a listener, as I was speaking to you, that should not affirm your opinion, but it's simply a kind of an odd, an oddity of this entire thing, that so many different sides have all kind of come together on this, so...
And Chris, let me say, maybe one positive that comes out of this is, we do have a lot of folks interested in education, and maybe folks are more aware of some of the facts that they were not aware of before, and we welcome that. I welcome sitting down, after this is over, whichever way it goes, I welcome down and sitting down and listening to some of the things that's been brought out, and, you know, listening to some of the reports and the data. A lot of people have put a lot of time into this, because the Lowndes County School Board's gonna have some tough decisions to make, should this pass, and there's been a lot of good information presented. If it doesn't pass, as we hope it doesn't, and believe it won't, then there's still a lot of good information that's been collected, and there's been a lot of interested parents and other groups that have dug into the details, and, you know, I'm interested in hearing what they have to say.
I've said it over and over, if we can have as many people who've been coming to these forums, show up and read to a first grader in both school systems, man, we'd be way ahead of things, so... Back to the phone lines real quick, two four one one oh five nine. Hello, caller, how are you?
I'm great, thank you. I appreciate you getting all this information out to the community. I do have a question.
Shoot.
We've gotten some recent ads from QE stating that unifying our school system would allow the community to build magnet and charter schools, and I was just wondering if it would take consolidation to actually, to benefit from those, to actually get those. Thank you very much.
Thank you for the call. Fred, I'll let you go with that one.
Yeah, that's a, that's a good, that's a good question, because I do think, in some of the flyers and advertisement, it's trying to connect those two together, and folks need to know that either school district could decide if they want to try to go the magnet school route, charter school, a career academy, I mean, absolutely, you don't, I mean, you can look across the state and the other independent school districts, I mean, you know, that's going on, so you don't, you certainly do not have to consolidate to make those considerations. I will say this, it gets back to money. I'll point over to Ware County, and I'm, Chris, you know, I'm a farmer, and they, when they consolidated, one of the things that they wanted to do was build a magnet school, and it concentrated on ag education. I'm telling you, it got nationally renowned in pretty short order. Last year, the voters decided to close the school, not because it was not doing real well.
It was doing fantastic.
I'm telling you, it was doing great. It was a financial decision, it was costing almost two meals, you know, they, when they worked out all the numbers, it was costing them almost two meals in the Ware County school, of the school tax millage rate, was, they figured it was costing there, and the folks over there decided, they couldn't, you know, they didn't think they could afford And the folks over there decided they couldn't, you know, they didn't think they could afford it. So, all these things and that, you know, that's been sent out about expanding all the programs and all these programs being for, available in all the schools, that's not reality. I think, you know, uh, I, I like Mr. Watley a lot, he called it a red herring. And, and I, you know, we tried, we challenged Troy two ways when he was working on all his numbers. Take everything that the QE group is saying that we're, that we need to have in this community, and that they want to have, and that they're saying that we can have if we consolidate, and put numbers to it. Well, we said that in our forum, uh, you know, and we explained, now, this is the QE, which would take like 20, it was like 27 meals or something, which is completely illegal, you can't do that. So, and then we said, now, on the other page, the other side, the other slides, it was like, here's the real, you know, cost. Let's say you don't, you don't do any of that stuff, you just, you know, the loss of federal funding, state funding, how would all that really affect us? And that's, uh, you know, that, that's the part that's real, no matter what happens, you know, if, if you do it, those, those are the real costs.
And let me get you to answer what he said, because what he said was, well, if you're looking at ways where it won't work, that's what you're going to come up with. But if you're trying to figure out, okay, we've got to do this, how can we make it work? Your answer would be a lot different.
That, that's right. And listen, he's absolutely right. He said, I mean, he's a former school board member. We would sit there, and there would be winners, and there would be losers. And, and that's what I'm saying, you know, I can't sit here and tell you, I'm only one board member. Which programs would survive? Which ones would any expand? I, I, I don't know. I, I mean, but the reality is, there's winners and losers on that deal. And it depends on how much you want to cut and where you want the mileage. But there's no doubt that, that there'd be a substantial tax increase, because, you know, the, the loss of federal and state funding is going to have to be made up, and that, that's, that's the reality.
241-1059 is our number. And once again, I do want to tell you also that, uh, as of last night's school board meeting, there will be another forum, I believe, on November the 1st.
Six, it's going to be six o'clock this time, Chris, but at the Lowndes Cafeteria. It is, it is, we got that worked out today, we had some scheduling things, but it's, it's going to be at Lowndes Cafeteria.
And we tried to make it a little earlier so that folks could come right from work and maybe not have to go home and come back.
And, and we're going to go in all the details, and we're going to try to focus there on the numbers. Because there was a bunch of emails sent out by the QE folks, just questioning our numbers. And like I said, now, if you question our numbers, it was based on the QE data, well, we questioned them too. That, that's, we were just trying to put a number to all that dream list of stuff that, you know, they said that they wanted. But, so we'll go over that if people want to, but we'll go over the real stuff that's going to happen. So we'll have it both there, and we can dive into the details. And of course, Dr. Davis is going to be the one orchestrating that show.
They keep pointing to you, Troy, I don't know if it's a good or bad thing, but, uh, but yeah, November the 1st at 6 o'clock, and when it's all over, we'll have a fish fry at Dr. Schmitt's. No, I'm just kidding, Dr. Schmitt, we won't come crash on your house, I promise. Let's go back to the phone lines. Hey caller, go ahead.
Uh, yes, I live over in Bruce County, I've been out fishing in the rain, listening to both sides of this view. Uh, I'm a school teacher in Lowndes County. Uh, I've had kids to go to Lowndes County, and because of convenience, me takes them there. And then after getting out of middle school, they graduated from Bruce County High School. There are excellent teachers in Bruce County, there's excellent teachers in Valdosta City Schools, there's excellent teachers in Lowndes County. Uh, personally, because I teach in Lowndes County, I'd like to see more diversity in the teaching. But that's just the way it is. And, uh, I'm trying to figure out just where we're coming from on this issue, consolidating these two schools. Like I said, I, I'm a teacher in eighth grade in Lowndes County. Um, and I have not heard anything yet that sells me on this as to, to the, uh, what would benefit from this. Uh, I, I'm thinking right now, Martin Luther King Jr., uh, with the memorial there in the National Mall. I wonder what he would say, because we've come a long ways. It should not be about race, I heard a thing about poverty. It should be about what can we do to give these kids the best education? That's the bottom line. I'll get off the phone, bye.
Thank you very much, and we couldn't agree more. And, you know, and I'll be honest with you, and I'm not going to ask these gentlemen to comment on it, because they had nothing to do with it being put together. But when you bring up Dr. Martin Luther King and the, uh, the ad that's been, that was playing, I think they have a new one going now. Uh, you know, to me, that was my whole problem with the advertisement, is that we're comparing something that was a huge black eye on this nation 50 years ago to something, uh, which is a lot different now, we've used the term segregation, I think that gets misused in this entire thing. But let me say, anybody who is, uh, on the, on the side of against, being against consolidation, and those who are on the QE side, or support QE, being pro-consolidation, I don't doubt that they all want the best for public school education in Valdosta Lowndes County. They have, I think, differing ideas of how that's going to be achieved. But I'm not questioning the motives of anybody on that side. But again, it's just a, you look at what's out there and how are you going to get there? And that's what I think, and that's what Fred said, and as Jimmy said, we're all about the facts, and that's what we do need to be about. So, uh, real quick, back to the phone lines, sorry about that. Hello caller, go ahead.
Hello.
Hello, you're on the air, go ahead.
Yes, uh, my question is this. I think that, um, I've listened to both sides of the argument, both from QE and also from the county school system. And I just have, uh, a concern that it seems to me QE is, uh, has, has a very elaborate smoke and mirror as far as, uh, saying that bigger is better. The economy of skills might work fine with Sam's buying at Sam or Walmart. But when you come to training and educating children, I just don't feel like that's the way to go. I have a neighbor across the street that is a teacher in the public school system here in Valdosta. And, uh, she's really concerned about what, what her future is going to be at the school. And if, you know, the commentators, if they would just elaborate on that, I would appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your call, we appreciate it.
There's, there's a lot, you know, Fred and I both have the opportunity to go to a number of, uh, conventions. And usually twice a year, we'll go to Georgia School Board Association in Atlanta and Savannah. We have the opportunity to meet and talk with other school boards and, uh, and, uh, other school systems. And we usually get the opportunity to hear some good speakers there. Lately, there's been a lot of focus on what can you do to help underprivileged kids? What can you do to help minority kids, or those that come from a lower, lower socioeconomic status? And time and again, the model that we hear that works the best, and this is from inner-city schools, this is from schools that were not performing for years and have since been turned around, is that you focus on, you know, giving good role models, you focus on providing a good environment, you try to give some support for preschool programs, for after-school programs, uh, pre-K programs. You try to give all the academic help you can, but you also try to isolate and focus and give help in small groups, so you can focus on the needs of those groups. And it just seems that we can do more, and I've heard Dr. Kason make this very statement, that he can do more for his targeted groups and his needy groups and his kids that need help. He can do more for them in a smaller school system, rather than putting it into a much larger school system where they may get just lost in the shuffle.
And that's kind of reflective of, as we talk about, uh, local government as well. I mean, there's a trend now toward more local government, more, we talk about more local control all the time and getting away from big government. And that's kind of the same theory, I guess, so.
Oh, yeah. And, and another point, uh, to answer the question from the caller too, is about, I mentioned it a while ago. There'll be, we don't know the percentage, it'll, it'll come down to how we're being funded. You can, you can, uh, locally fund some teacher positions. Uh, the teacher percentage will be the lowest percentage of the folks that would lose their jobs, you know. Because it depends on what the class size, the, the new class size formula we ended up having, and about subject areas and certification and stuff like that. The, the support staff, I think, would be one of the larger percentages that you'll see as far as, to try to answer his question about his neighbor, where you'll see the most job losses. And you, like I said, this is stuff you can go look and see what's happening in other systems. I'm, I, you know, I don't want to be accused of trying to, trying to scare anybody. I'm saying, hey, go check it out. I mean, go, go, go look at it. And then a sort of administrative staff would be probably second on the list. So it'd probably go, uh, support staff would have the highest percentage cuts. Uh, administration would be right behind that, and then the teachers, you know, so. But there'd be job losses in every, every area. But that don't mean that the majority of people, uh, you know, even under a new formula, would, are going to be needed. But there's going to be, there's going to be less folks needing, and that's just the way the formula's going to, going to fall out.
That's right. All right, we've got time for one more phone call, 241-1059. Here on the Chris Beckham Show, brought to you by Valdosta Toyota. Hello caller, how are you?
Hey, Chris, how are you?
I'm great.
Uh, I know you're talking to these guys, but, uh, what's been on my mind is, you know, the talk is about money. And, uh, you know, the money's coming from the state and the federal government, I'm, I'm sure. So, why don't we start at the top and start replacing people who's, uh, kind of put, uh, education, you know, on the side? And, uh, you know, see what'll happen.
Well, I don't think, there's no one who's putting education on the side. This entire discussion is about education. However, uh, the finances of it, I think, are a very big part of it, because, you know, you can have a wish list of things to better education all you want to, but if you can't pay for it.
Well, with the finances though, I mean, if people are, if they're, if they keep, uh, you know, uh, you know, dropping the, the finances towards these, uh, these schools, and, uh, they, they don't have enough to, you know, kind of function. Uh, you know, they're, they're having cutbacks and all that, and that's, that's what I don't understand. You know, it sounds like it's, it's playing second fiddle.
I, I think Troy could address that. I think what he's addressing is the trend, and this has mainly been, especially in the last several years with the economy going down, is the percentage that the state, the state is, by const, by state constitution is the main. I mean, you know, they're, they're, they're charged with educating their kids, you know. And so where it used to be up 60% or so, we're down around 50, uh, I'm in Troy's area here, I think it's around 55% or so.
Yeah, 52.
52%. So, I think that's the trend. And so now, we, you know, you'll see it across the state and across the country where local revenue has had to be, you know, more local revenues needed to just try to keep, keep, keep pace. So I think the caller and I agree that, first of all, the way education is funded, which we can't change right here in Lowndes County, but in Atlanta and Washington DC, I do agree, I mean, that's something that I really think needs to be, be addressed. And then about how we're, the trend we're in is, is absolutely going backwards, and that's not, that's not good.
Right. Those, like Fred said, the state funds have declined significantly. We were out at the Bus Transportation Department for Lowndes County this morning with a meeting of those folks and honoring them. And it was brought to my attention that with all these cuts in state funding, only 27% of the transportation is paid for by state funds. That means the balance of that is paid for out of local funds. So as they've cut funds, it hadn't been equal across the board, rightfully so, they've been trying to maintain funds to the classroom teacher. But some of our programs are not even funding at 50%, we're funding at 27% on transportation. So we really fund the balance of that out of local, of local tax funds.
Okay, caller, there you go.
Yeah, thank you, Chris.
Hey, I appreciate your call, thank you.
Bye, buddy, bye.
241-1059 is our number. There's a lot to go over. And again, we've kept these guys here for a full hour, and we appreciate their, uh, their, their, uh, their flexibility to come and taking the time out of their schedule. But I do know that, again, if you have a question, there's a lot of information on the Lowndes County Schools website. You can also go to the forum coming up on November the 1st. And again, we'll be taking your calls on this tomorrow as part of our show. We'll do it every day right up until November the 8th. It's, uh, it is that important, guys. I know that's why you've spent, uh, I would hate to know how much time you guys have spent. And Troy, I probably need to directly address you on that, because I know how much time you've gone over and done this. As has the other side as well, that discussion is good, but it is a big deal. I'm glad so many people are interested in it, so.
You mentioned it, Chris, I just want to say, Troy's done a lot of this at home, in the evenings and on the weekends. I know, because I've called and talked to him, so he, he's, you know, he's, he's been charged with trying to keep our school system, uh, running in the meantime, and doing all this stuff, uh, on his, uh, on his spare time, which, uh, anyway. So I, we appreciate all the work he's put in, and we, you're right, we're going to show it off again and go into, dive in as much detail as the folks, uh, that'll show up and ask his questions, want to, wherever they want to go, November 1st, 6 o'clock at the cafeteria. So I hope, I hope we'll get the interested parties out there, uh, to ask, ask questions and come look at the information.
And be in touch with your school board representative, whether that's in the county or the city, really. Because again, the city of, uh, voters will be voting on this, Lowndes County voters will not. Then that's an entirely separate show, but we can get into it today. But, uh, we've talked about that a good bit, but if you're in the city of Valdosta, I urge you to, uh, get as much information as you can, because it will affect all of us, but the city of Valdosta voters are the ones who will, uh, have the polls and the voting booths at their disposal. And so we hope that they make their voice heard between now and November the 8th. Guys, as always, I really do appreciate it. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Chris.
And good to see you as well. We appreciate you coming by. We'll take a break and come back, back, got a whole lot more, or actually, a little bit more, coming up on the Chris Beckham Show, brought to you by Valdosta Toyota. More right after this on News Talk 105.9, this is WVGA.